Good evening. Welcome to this September 19th, 2022 meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you'd now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our- Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Murin.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
All right, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion second, no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
We then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So vote.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number 20 on the council agenda under public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing to consider a request from Wyndham Hills of Norfolk LLC to consider a zoning change from R1, single-family residential district, to R2, one and two-family residential district on property located directly north of Wyndham Hills addition and Wyndham Hills second addition replat. And to kick off some discussion on this, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner. Val?
Hi, thank you. As you described, this is just north of where they are kind of built out in that northwest corner currently, and it is between where they're built right now and where we did a zone change here not too long ago on the land just south of Benjamin that went from Ag and RR to R2. So they're wanting to change some of this R1 zoned to R2 also, so that would connect with what just got changed here a few months ago. We do not have a plat with this currently, it's just the zone change, but if you have any questions, the applicant is here tonight.
Okay, any questions, council? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I will move, I'll ask for a planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 7th, 2022 at the request of Wyndham Hills of Norfolk LLC to consider a zoning change from R1, single-family residential district, to R2, one and two-family residential district on property located directly north of Wyndham Hills addition and Wyndham Hills second addition replat. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with an eight to zero vote.
Okay, thank you, Brianna. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 21 and look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5800 approving a zoning change from R1 to R2 on property located directly north of Wyndham Hills addition and Wyndham Hills second addition replat.
I will offer for consideration ordinance number 5800 approving a zoning change from R1, single-family, to R2.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion on this or questions, council? Hearing non-short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5800 passes on first reading.
Hearing that there's no opposition to this, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5800 on second and third.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5800 passes on second and third.
All right, item 22, I will open this public hearing to discuss the 2023-2032, 2023-32 capital improvement program, which includes the 2022 to 2027 one and six-year plan for street improvements. And to open this public hearing, we'll hear from Lyle Lett, Director of Administrative Services. Lyle?
Good evening, Mayor. Does this sound like it's on?
Above now.
Bring it a little closer, maybe.
One, two.
There we go.
There we go. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the CIP, my annual visit with you. This is something to talk about at the Planning Commission Subcommittee Meeting, August 10th, visited with the Subcommittee, or excuse me, with the Planning Commission on September 7th, and here it is before you. I'll talk a little bit about what it is, the makeup, how it comes to be formulated. While I'm doing that, if you would, look through it, and we'll let you guide the conversation on what you want to talk about at whatever depth. I believe it starts in your packets on page 96, and if you're looking specifically at the items along the left side, I'll talk a little bit, and then we can get into some questions. But this is a 10-year outlook for purchases in excess of $50,000, capital-type projects for city, city future expenses. You'll notice it must have a funding source depicted across as a letter identifier near where the money is, and that's broken down by the cheater bar across the top that talks about where those funding sources are. Every year, about late winter, early spring, we get together and talk about the CIP, what's changed, what's modified, what needs to be moved forward, moved back. That team that does that is Randy, Sheila Rios, Stephen, Anna Allen, Scott Cordes, Scott Cordes is not here tonight, and myself. And we compile that, and we take it to Mr. Colvin for his input after that. So what you see here is a very Cliff Notes version of what's actually unfolded over the course of time. It's very hard to predict how things are going to be, what's going to be needed in the future. 10 years out, what are we going to need for snowplows? What are we going to need for ambulances? As such, when we visit about it every year, we adjust those costs. So if an ambulance two years ago was $200,000, pre-COVID was $200,000, we're not going to probably be able to get that now at that price. So we, these guys have four of them in the fleet, they adjust those prices going forward. This is far enough out in the future that we have an inflationary factor that gets factored into it as well, and put forth our best effort to target those amounts to the best of our ability. This, what you see here, gets factored into the long-term financial plan, has to stay on the positive side to keep everything the way Randy wants it functioning. So if we make adjustments in some aspect, the first thing we do is what's the impact going to be? What's the, how's it going to affect the long-term financial plan? Is the funding there? What steps need to be taken? It's best, if you'll notice, the far-right column, 2031, 2032, this machine, this spreadsheet machine works best when we can plunk items in way out at the end and allow that to move forward as time passes, and then it gets placed into the budget smoothly. There's challenges that come along when we plunk high-dollar items in short-term, in a short-term period, because to do that, it's going to bump something else out of the way. This is slightly different, minor modifications from what you, what you elected officials saw in July, based on what we were talking about there. And I know that we talked specifically, Mayor, and asked about, I think, Councilman Clausen, about perhaps depicting this a little bit differently in the future. And we can do that. We've talked about that a little bit. How? I'm not sure yet, but it's not necessarily-
I can give you one suggestion. It'd be nice to have general revenue, what's coming out of each category.
You're writing this down?
General revenue, it'd be nice to see what exactly is coming out of general revenue, what's coming out of, like, say, your reserve bonds, and how, you know, which, and just see a dollar figure with that per year, so you kind of got an idea going. Otherwise, you got, this is such a big chart.
It is a big-
You kind of get lost in the details, I feel, a little bit. And then you could see exactly when somebody asks a question, like, say, what's coming out of the CHAF bonds or CHAF tax for roads and improvements, and, you know, and then you, I think it would help with, because we've got Keno funds on here, we've got state tax. I mean, there's certain funds that are totally just really only controllable by this council. Some of the funds are funding that, you know, comes from the state, which isn't controlled by the council, it's just, we just direct to where it goes. I think that'd be a good way to start. I mean, I don't know what you guys think, but I think it'd be nice to see what you've got tied to each amount each year, you know? And you could, it's here, it's on the sheet, it's just-
It's different, it's challenging to read.
Right.
Yeah, I totally get it.
Yeah, somewhat of a simplification of the categorization, I think, and classifications of the different capital expenditures.
When we kick this off in the spring to start having these discussions, I'd generally review how much, file a letter to send out to all the division heads to say, dust off your documents, figure out what you need, what you've learned this past year, what's your future looks like. Prior to that, this year, we're going to have a discussion about that, that'll include you for it. Let's see. That's the general overview of how the CIP works, as far as the anatomy of it. You, we talked about the source codes up along the top. As you look along the left two columns, you'll see the division that goes, that's being talked about, and then specifically the item that's being talked about. So with that, you'll notice the street division is heavily equipment-dependent, a lot of trucks, machinery. Next, parks is very heavily project-dependent. So I don't want to take up too much time, but we'll take as much time as you want or as you need. What questions do you have? Having said that, I have the 100,000-foot view on this thing. If you, if we really want to get in the weeds in something, I'm going to have to call my colleagues to talk about stuff. But what do you got for questions?
I just, one question when putting this together, was, was the general bond obligation, the new general bond obligation for street improvements with the CHAF tax specifically figured into what will be done down the road with roads, or is, or like, on a very conservative way, or did, but there was no anticipation of anything passing, you know, with that, with the roads, with the streets ask here coming up with the half percent sales, you know what I'm saying? Like, was it, is this a very conservative model we're looking at for road?
I would say yes, and specifically for the CHAF, we've got about $20 million, over $20 million of bonds we issued, and the, there's actually a CHAF long-term financial plan in the budget document itself. And if I remember right, there's about $700,000 of interest expense in there for the first five years, and then we start paying principal, and that goes up to like 1.7 million or something. And I think the budget numbers we have in there for the CHAF growth are fairly reasonable. I don't think they're wild and crazy by any means.
Okay.
And then the CHAF money that's left over after that is what's supporting the street improvements, for the most part, you're seeing in the street improvement plan, as part of the capital improvement plan.
Okay, all right. Good question. Others?
Okay, I think, Lyle, sometimes, just concept-wise, it's a little complicated with capital improvement programs and how it relates to the yearly budget, and maybe Randy can answer this, too. Is it fair to say the CIP is a, acts as a guidepost, a working document from which the annual budgets and then the long-term financial plans are determined?
Yes, that first column you see in the CIP for '22, '23, those numbers in there flow through to our budget and are in the capital outlay items in the budget document. And the things like, that are being paid from general revenues, like Shane was mentioning earlier, those, we have a separate little spreadsheet that tracks how much of the capital projects fund is set aside for those general revenue items. So if you've got, try to keep that transfer pretty constant, growing no more than what we're assuming for inflation. Because we'll have the money there when those big items come out, and won't have to have a bond issuer tax increase for a particular large item, such as a motor grader or something. And this whole thing that affects capital, whether it be through the general fund revenues, or bond issue that's going to be paid out of debt service fund, or a bond issue that's going to be paid out of the CHAF fund, those all flow through into another little spreadsheet, some modely impact of that going out 10 years on all those different revenue sources, and how that will impact what we have available for operations and other capital outlay.
So this, which is one last question then. So with this, while we're looking at this, this is the same model you're using when you're figuring that, the spreadsheet that's showing us three and a half percent more coming in as far as what, sales tax, property tax receipts, and then you take that at a three percent expenditure, and you'll be able to keep your beginning balance growth, or your emergency funding growth there stabilized without a property tax increase?
Yes, that's what the model shows, which is based on assumptions.
But that's off this, right, we're looking at.
And that's, and those assumptions are consistent throughout the CIP, the debt service fund, the general fund. So yes, that all flows through here. And if our assumptions are exactly right, we'll be growing our fund balance at three percent per year and have our property tax rate going down.
Reduction, yeah, right, yeah, okay.
Lots of variables will play into it, though.
Right.
All right. Good questions.
Any further questions about the capital improvement program? Not, I think we can then move into an overview of the one and six-year plan for street improvements included within the CIP. From Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director.
Val, yeah, either Val or Lyle, if you could pull that up. Or if it's just as easy for me to plug in, I'd be happy to come up. There you go. Mayor and council, we'll go through maybe the first four slides of this, and then if you want to go a little bit further, I sure can. What this is here is, I wanted to show and just talk a little bit about, here, this is a slide from the DOT that I inserted some additional information on for, to show the City of Norfolk and our street program in terms of the payment condition, or PCI, I refer to it, the Nebraska DOT looks at a NSI, which is essentially the same number. It stands for Service Index. The DOT tries to maintain our interstate systems at about a 95, so this would show they're running somewhere between over the last since 2010, they kind of bumped it up from the upper 90s up to about a 95, and they're trying to maintain our interstate system in that 92 to 95 area. The state highway system, you can see there, they've got a goal identified as an 80 to an 85 percent of NSI, and they've made some good progress here over the last decade or so in hitting their goal. The Norfolk Streets Program, I plugged in some information over the last few years, kind of showing where we are. What that represents is the issues relative to that alkali silica reactivity that was going down in the early part of the century, 2000 to 2010-ish roughly. And as some of those projects started to deteriorate, that ASI, ASR issue started to react with the salts and stuff that we throw down on the streets, and we saw the condition of our street system deteriorate. I think with, from what I can see and the money that we've been putting in and the focus on certain areas, we've stabilized that. The challenge before us now is just to grow back out of that and try and hit a target zone that I show there in that blue strip. Somewhere in the low 70s, I'd say about a 74 to 70 is a good target zone to be managing our system within. Next slide, Val. This is our, our CHAF revenue is what I'm showing here. This is our, you can see our 2020 and 2021 actuals against the 2020 projected of 3.7 million. And then kind of as Randy indicated, we budget, we budget the expected revenue in a range of about 10% lower than what we, what we may receive. That allows us, you know, street projects are very, very expensive. We do our best to plan those with contingency dollars. At a state and federal level, they plan for contingency and they plan for supplemental so that when you're bidding projects, you know you need to do the project, otherwise you wouldn't be bidding it out. If it comes over, you'd like to have that little bit of supplemental sitting there. So by budgeting reasonably conservative, that creates that ability for us to supplement projects as they might come in over an anticipated budget. So again, you know, this budgeting strategy that we use and budgeting conservatively really saved our baking, bacon as we hit the COVID issue here back in early 2020. We had enough money in our balance, and we had budgeted appropriately to carry us through that, and actually, we were just entering our budget cycle as COVID hit, and I believe we budgeted down that year to about 2.8 million in anticipated revenue. We were able to probably push a little higher number than what I originally would have thought of because we were starting to stabilize by mid-June, early July here in the, in the middle of the country. So, again, you know, this year with the annexation, we're not exactly sure how that's going to impact our number, so rather than push that too hard compared to last year, we, I think last year our budget was around 3.4, right in that area. So we're up a little bit in terms of our budget. Go to the next slide, please. This is probably the big slide I wanted to focus on, and this is what our one and six-year plan looks like for the next six years. Now, in the CIP, in the CIP you have our capital improvement plan, you've got 10 years. Every year, we file a one and six-year plan with the Department of Transportation. We have public hearings around that together, public input. And this is what our one and six-year plan looks like. So this is the first six years of our 10-year CIP. You see 6.1 million over the next six years in street maintenance and street repair by contract. The Michigan Avenue and Eighth Street Project, that's currently getting ready to go up for bids, has about 2.53 million in there. Miscellaneous paving districts, those are paving districts that come in to us through developers that are pursuing a paving district. There's a component of that district that is assessed, and then there's a component of that district that is the city contribution. First Street Bridge at Norfolk, that's a project here that's currently under contract. That is this next year's portion of that project. Miscellaneous bridge repairs, that is unidentified. Every year, we have bridges that are inspected. This next year, we have several, probably the largest chunk of bridges that over the last five years that are going to be inspected. We know there's going to be some repairs come up, deck repairs, wing repairs, so we should have a placeholder in there for that. Benjamin Avenue improvements, there, that's part of the existing project, anticipate we have 4.5, a little over 4.5 million in the one and six-year program for those costs this year. The Brosch Avenue intersection, which is part of the downtown improvements there and the bridge replacement, there's a little less than $800,000 in there for that. Microseal and Armor Coat, we're currently looking at exactly where that's going to go. We have two projects, one of them $925,000 that we will put together and bid out this fall, and then about five years down the road will be another project at that same $925,000. Street shop space needs, we're in a fairly old facility, we're adding, adding another staff person in there this year. We know we need to give it a little bit of facelift to get us down the road, so we have a little bit of money in there just to look at our space needs, traffic flow, heavy truck flow. We have trouble getting some of our product in, into the site that we need, so just looking at that to give staff an appropriate space to be working in. Mill and overlays, that is currently on the design table here in the street, or here in the city's engineering office, and we'll be putting that out on the street for bids in about another month. Prospect and Oak Streaks, so some repair work going in over Prospect and Oak related to some on-street parking, general improvements there, some utility, utility work was going on. Planning for Victory Road and Benjamin, we have $250,000 in the budget to start looking at planning for the future of the intersection there at Benjamin Avenue and Victory Road. We see, that does see quite a bit of traffic in there. We know we have some plans to encourage and expand our industrial growth up in that end of the community, and so just anticipating we're going to need to be doing something there in the next, in the next five years, five to 10 years. 25th Street, north of Benjamin Avenue, last year, we had some very good conversations just around pedestrian safety in that corridor, the location of sidewalk adjacent to the street, the general street conditions. The intent here is that we get that, the future improvements designed and do some, do some pavement repair, get the storm sewer in, get the trail extension running up on the west side, possibly all the way up to Sheridan and tie that into the trail that will run through, through that Blackberry project. Possibly sidewalk as well on the east side, but just a standard sidewalk. The goal there is to make that a more pedestrian-friendly and safe corridor for the community. Streetlight upgrades and power undergrounding, we've been, this will pretty much pay for itself in the next five, five years, little over five years. $300,000 of that will be paid back in energy savings by converting our streetlights to LED. And then traffic signal improvements, that $150,000 there, that's about $50,000 every other year, looking at adding auxiliary lights on the side at traffic, traffic lights, updating some of our pedestrian activation systems, and then also looking at some key intersections to update the overall traffic patrol systems in those intersections. So all total over the next six years, just over $24 million, and about $14 million of that this next year, about $2 million a year after that for duration appropriate.
Stephen, on your microseal and mill and overlay, how many lane miles is that, you know?
Don't know. It is my hope that we can do about 50% of our asphalt system with a microseal or chip seal within that. Off the top, my head, I don't know the total lane miles.
Those projects aren't necessarily all identified today, or are they?
Those projects are not all identified today. As one, I think, Councilman Clausen had asked, you know, is any of that anticipated money in here from a bond initiative? No, we don't, we don't know that that's going to happen. If that happens, that would probably change, we can turn around mill- If that happens, that would probably change, we can turn around mill, or the, the microseal, chip armor coat and some even the concrete intersection repairs. We had turned around as much of that as we could and hoped to get that built in 2023. And then another project probably a year from now for 2024 construction.
One question. On the, on the budget, you said it twenty-four million is, because you had, you showed three point seven in six years, that's two point two million or twenty-two point two million. Am I missed? Is, or is there one point eight left?
Of, of this twenty-four million, some of, some of this twenty-four million that we're spending is, is the, some of the bonds specifically on the Benjamin Avenue project and the First Street Bridge at North Fork Avenue. So those are some of the CHAF dollars that are being spent out of this. The rest, or the CHAF bond, the rest of it is just purely, purely CHAF.
Yeah, you got it all obligated. You can, if you take the twenty-four million minus the Benjamin Avenue and First Street Bridge, take that out of there and take your bond payment out of there, you, and then take your paving districts because those will be funded back with a improvement district, you know, and then you, you write it about sixteen mil for, so it's, you're right on the, right on the money with, I mean, everything on here is obligated for, so.
Correct. Everything on here is obligated, right. So as, as you go back and look at our revenue, if gas taxes come in higher, if our, if our federal STP fund buyback comes in higher, you know, that, that, that develops some extra, extra cash there.
So of that twenty-four million, because you know, like just get, not being nitpicky, but we said one point seven would be coming in. So you're kind of speculating on that, some growth there to get to the twenty-four million? Or, or is there some in the, besides the, unless you're taking that whole?
Oh, this, this twenty-four million, this twenty-four million, the, the, the bond payments are already taken out of that.
Right, right.
This is, this is after we, after we take our bond payments out and.
So you're fat, you're taking those out, so.
That's out.
The bond payment for the next twenty years is not included in this?
So the, our, the CHAF budget transfers, I don't remember the exact numbers off, a little leniency, but the CHAF budget transfers about four hundred thousand dollars to the street department as part of their, their funding source.
Sure.
For the next, if you include this fiscal, this next fiscal year, there's five years on the, on the big bond, the twenty million dollar bond, there's, there's five years that we're just paying the interest on that. And then after that, we pay principal and interest.
Yeah, I think you said seven hundred thousand for the next five years and then one point seven after that?
Yes, I just, I actually got the plan in front of me. It's about seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, went to thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of interest the first five years. And then bond payments go up to about one million, seven hundred and eighty thousand each year thereafter with principal and interest both for the next fifteen years.
This twenty-four million here though, just has that out of it?
Yes.
Okay. So if you, on, on your CIP, if you look at the numbers on your CIP that we have listed for projects, would that add up to this, that actually adds up to twenty-four million, three hundred and eleven dollars? And that is just the dollars left that we're allocating to projects.
So Steve, since it's not accounted for here, if that half percent sales tax initiative were to be approved by voters in November, the portion of that dedicated to streets is somewhere in the realm of ten to twelve million, is that right?
Ten to twelve million.
And how, so how would that impact this one and six-year street plan?
Four point five million of that would go, if, you'd look at it as all going to get to street maintenance by contract. Four and a half million of that would go to concrete repairs, asphalt repairs that are intersections. And then another, say roughly five and a half to six million then would be looked at, I would say mostly concrete street repairs, but there would probably be some mill and overlay. I'd say maybe three and a half million of concrete street repairs, spall repairs, joint repairs. And then the remainder, two, two million would be mill and overlay.
I don't want to harp on this, but this isn't adding up to me. Sorry, I just need some clarification. If you take one point seven million out, or say you take six years or five years at seven hundred thousand payment for on-interest, and then figure, are you, are there something else, because there's some other funding going into this street maintenance plan out of our budget? I mean, I, on, on our capital outline, plan, it does show that stuff's coming out of the general fund. But we're only, I'm only coming up with, between right around sixteen million.
So.
And so that would be additional, where's that additional eight?
Are you taking into account the debt service or the CHAF bond proceeds that are part of this twenty-four million? There's, for instance, Eighth Street and Michigan Avenue is CHAF bond. I got the breakdown of that.
So is the, so for the next two years, so for.
So the bond itself isn't part of this thing?
No, the only thing that the twenty-four million years, that the twenty-four million is, is what's left that's being programmed into actual projects.
What else, what are their funding source though, beside, general fund, general funds and CHAF and?
Right, so this, this twenty-four million here, this twenty-four million is roughly thirteen point six million in CHAF.
Okay, okay.
Eight point eight million in CHAF bonds, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in assessed, assessed CHAF for those paving districts and about another three hundred thousand in city general obligations.
Okay, I got you.
As, as, so what we do is our budget at this, every, every year, we kind of reassess what that year's CHAF income is and then kind of look at how we project forward. But as we project forward, this year I'm budgeting three point seven, next year three point seven, the following year, three point seven five, then three point eight five, three point eight five. And in the last year of the six-year program, we're budgeting three point nine. So that's the total, total CHAF dollars that we're budgeting. And like I say, we budget about ninety percent of what, based on a trajectory of what we have been getting, what we could get. But, you know, we try and build a very solid program in terms of the projects that we want to do. If we, if we tried to budget against ninety-five percent or a hundred percent of what we really expect to get, that would put our, our projects in jeopardy as those dollars fluctuate up and down. So we, again, we try to, we try to be pretty conservative and budget our, budget our income low, budget our projects high.
Steve, that brings that question up for me, then that gas tax revenue that you're talking about, is that a flat taxing or a percentage tax?
The, it's a formula-based tax, it's a formula, so that, that money is captured by the feds and the state. And then there's a formula based on population, lane miles that allocates that back to us.
And its usage, which is why you saw it dip a little bit in twenty, right, with COVID?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, some of the, the total, I have to go back, you want to back up a, back up a couple of slides for me there? There you go. So you got the state sales, state gas tax, state federal gas tax, motor vehicle fees, what you pay when you buy a vehicle and go register it. We buy back federal dollars from the, the STP funds. It's easier than us having to follow all the state guidelines for those funds, it's just easier. So we buy those back from the DOT, they use those as part of, the federal dollars as part of their, their projects. And we get some, a very small amount of NDOT incentive dollars. Occasionally, there'll be some bridge fund dollars that show up in here as well, but they're generally in the twenty thousand dollar range.
The lighting upgrades, does that include the conversion of all of our streetlights to LEDs? Does that finish it out then?
That would, yeah, that would upgrade, NPPD is either done or very nearly done with the portion of streetlights that are NPPD. It's what we call our M2 lights that, that we're responsible for, that this would convert.
Okay, any other questions on the one and six-year street plan? Thank you, Steve. Val, did you have something else? Okay, so there's a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now?
Couple, couple notes, couple notes.
Jim, I know we know who you are, but for the record, could you?
Jim Kinsey, sorry, sorry. The total miscellaneous street repair budget for the entire city, not counting just those specific projects, but street repair of residential streets throughout the entire city is one million dollars. The landscaping budget is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than, than the entire miscellaneous street repair budget for the entire city. During the budget hearing last week, when I suggested that this money be used for street repair, Andy said the money for landscaping was budgeted and saved over time for those specific purposes. That's not correct. We're told time and time again, the city cannot put money into a savings account like the schools can for a building fund. The city has to budget each year at a time. The dollars shown in the capital improvement plan is simply a number and a plan. It may or may not get spent, it may get changed and spent on something else, it may get eliminated altogether. It's not a savings account. What Andy was leaving, leading the public to believe, the landscape dollars that are in the plan this year can easily be used for street repairs, which in the mind of many citizens is probably a much more prudent use of those dollars. Regarding to the money allocated to specific street projects in twenty-two, twenty-three, eight point three million dollars of that is not coming out of this year's actual budget. It's being paid for with debt, it's being paid for with bonded debt. Again, we continue to rack up debt to pay for street repairs because we spend our tax dollars on non-critical wants instead of necessary street repairs. We need to look much more closely at our budget expenditures and eliminate the fluff and focus on the reality of our real needs. Lastly, at the budget meeting last week, I asked about the one million, five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars in the ARPA fund that was described as various other improvements. And I didn't know what that was, and I still don't know what that is. It's, it's well over the fifty thousand dollars you would think would be in the CIP, but I can't find it in the CIP anywhere. So can somebody tell me what that one million, five hundred, excuse me, five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars is?
We don't know what that is yet either. That's not allocated to a specific project at this point.
So that's just a slush fund?
That's money we have for.
Those were ARPA funds that were distributed to the city of North Fork by the federal government.
I understand what they are, but you've got them in a plan to spend them on something, but nobody, the citizens don't get to know what that is?
We've had, and staff can help me here, how many public input sessions on the ARPA funds to this point? There's been at least two I can remember.
Our discussions of the ARPA funds have been at a couple of different work sessions where the council does their strategic planning annually. But there's funds that are unallocated, as Randy just said, that at any time, if the council has a project that could come up, in the past, we've wanted it towards one-time expenditures, one-time projects. But right now, those are unallocated. We don't have anything specific for it today.
And each of those discussions that we've had have included the entire council in an open meeting setting, correct?
Correct.
So you got an approved budget to spend those dollars and the citizens have no clue where they're going to be spent?
All of the funds that have been designated from ARPA to this point have been designated in a manner in which the full council was present in the discussions surrounding their appropriations.
I'm talking about this million dollars.
Right, they've not, that, those, those funds have not been determined, it's an ongoing process. I think if you looked at most cities across the state of Nebraska right now, they've not allocated all of their ARPA funds because there's ongoing discussions on the highest and best use for them.
So there's also a six hundred and seven thousand dollar council priority project. So now we've got almost one point seven million dollars that could be used for streets that we evidently are not going to use for streets, or you allocated them for streets. So is it going to go to the riverfront or where's it going to go?
Very well could be used for streets if that were the will of the council.
Why wouldn't that have been already decided before this meeting?
Those are, the council priority dollars roll over year to year. And so I don't, you're saying six hundred thousand, is that accurate, Randy, in what's totally available in council priority dollars?
I believe that's approximately accurate. You have that actual number, Seeler?
My point is, it doesn't give the citizens a warm fuzzy when you got a million dollars in there and you're saying, we're going to spend it on something, but we're not going to tell you what we're going to spend it on. And we have all these needs for street repair. I mean, that's an obvious. I mean, you drive down any residential street in town and it's all broken up and why wouldn't that be used for street repair?
I, I, Jim, you bring up, like you said, you bring up some good points here. The one thing, I'm, the one thing I would look at though, on a different way, would say, that's a good thing there's council priority dollars there and they're not eaten up and taken away by something else. This is like the first time, I think I've been hearing that those council priority dollars haven't been used for wages or, you know, haven't been allocated to something, so we kind of have that, that's all freed up so it could do exactly what you're saying. It could go to streets, roads if there, if, you know, after, if there's enough input and spec, you know, from public to us to do that. I think that would happen. The other thing is, I'd be nervous if my city had already spent the ARPA funds up, that one point five million already, and it just got ate up into thin air and, and there wasn't, it wasn't sitting there getting ready for direction. So, and, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but on the same token, I'm agreeing with you that we need to designate it to someplace, right? But on the same token, I think it is kind of a positive thing, saying, okay, they're not gobbling everything up in their budget right now. They have the money sitting there, so it can be used for improvements.
And those, those are discretionary funds for the council to determine when, almost a savings account in which we can use.
The council priority dollars are probably the most flexible dollars that the city has.
Right. And ARPA, we, we have designated ARPA funds to street repair. We've also designated CARES Act dollars to street repair. I don't know if anybody has those numbers off the top of their hand, head, but the council has had those discussions in a public setting and has designated more to the street budget from both of those funds to this point.
The only ARPA funds that went to street repair was for the riverfront. There was none other that went for any street repairs, and I challenge you to prove that.
CARES Act money, how mu, how much money was designated from CARES Act?
ARPA money, ARPA.
The ARPA funds we have, Jim, are, we're using the safe harbor rule where you can say you had that much revenue loss, up to ten million dollars. So this is under ARPA money that's replacing revenue loss. So we can use it for any general fund purpose except for a few very specific things that you can't use ARPA for, like contributions to an unfunded pension liability, for instance, or to pay debt service. But for the most part, that can be used for anything that's a general fund.
I understand you can use it for anything. My point is, it should be used for street repair. And I don't see that it's being used for street repair.
I think we've gotten your point, Jim, and I would say that this council has designated more in street repair in the last few years than we have for a long time through various resources, recognizing the backlog of need that we're experiencing. As Steve Ramus just pointed out, there will be close to fourteen million dollars in street repair next year.
Correct.
Allocated. Have we ever spent that much money on streets, Steve?
Never.
And at least eight point three of that is bonded, so it's debt. It's not really money out of this year's budget, it's debt. So you're creating debt, paying interest on it, so.
Which a large majority of that goes to Benjamin Avenue reconstruction, which was a project that was kicked down the road for years and years while it only got more expensive. So this council decided to pull the trigger and get it done.
So I guess my last question is, when do you intend to determine what that one million, five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars in ARPA dollars is going to be spent on?
There will be ongoing discussions on ARPA, just as there have been over the last year since we've received those.
We don't have to.
And those, and those meetings will be publicly noticed. You're free to be there, Jim. I'm sure you will be.
There's a deadline, am I right? And those have to be spent by also?
They have to, the ARPA money has to be spent by the end of 2024 or at least. The ARPA money has to be spent by the end of 2024, or at least committed by the end of 2024.
So we have till 2024 to commit?
Yes.
Or sooner.
Is it not in this year's budget to spend that?
What's that, Jim?
Are those slated to be spent in this year's budget, as I read it? The $1,500,000, that's actually to be spent in this year's budget, correct?
Of the ARPA money?
Yes.
Yeah, wait, that's right. Let me pull that out.
So it's going to be spent this year. We just don't know what it's going to be spent on.
We didn't know what those monies were going to be spent on when they were allocated to us by the federal government. That's why we had a public process to determine where those priorities would lie.
I just find it interesting that you know where you're going to spend everything else. You itemize that, but we've got a million dollars that...
I challenge you to go look at any other local governing body's process for spending of ARPA funds. And try to find some distinction. There are discussions, there are public discussions about how...
The city's always done detailed budgeting and itemized that out.
Sure. And again, how many times have I said, we've had public input sessions about these ARPA dollars and how they would be allocated?
But they're not allocated in this year's budget, and they're going to be spent. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Okay. Seeing no one, I will move to close the hearing and advance to item 23. Would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2022-49, adopting the 23 to 32 Capital Improvement Program, which includes the 22 to 27 One and Six-Year Plan for Street Improvements.
I'll offer for consideration resolution 2022-49.
Second?
Okay. Motion in second. Any further discussion, council? Questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2022-49 is adopted.
Brings us to our regular agenda, and item number 24, Would Look for a Motion to Consider Resolution Number 2022-50, Approving the Additional 1% Increase in Restricted Fund Authority Allowed Upon the Affirmative Vote of At Least 75% of the Council.
All for consideration, resolution 2022-50.
Second?
Motion in second. And to give us some background on this, we'll hear from Randy Gates, our city finance officer.
Yes, Your Honor. This is a requirement of statutes. You have a separate vote passed by a supermajority if you want to carry forward the additional 1% in restricted funds authority that is allowed under state law. This won't change our budget in any way this year. We don't need that to meet the lead exemption this year. It carries forward to future years when we may need it. That lead law has a lot of quirky little things in it that can get you off guard, such as inter-local agreements that are an exemption under the lead law. So if we would change our insurance from MARM to some other insurance company, we would lose all of that as an exemption, and then we'd be having a real tough time meeting the lead. So this just gives us some extra flexibility going forward, but it doesn't change anything in the current year's budget.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy on that?
So this is more for the years to come if needed?
Yeah. This is strictly something that will apply to future budget years if we need that extra restricted funds authority. So it changes nothing in this budget year. But if we would, something, or another thing is if you're accumulating, save the chaff money for a big street project, and you're not spending it, capital outlays is an exemption under the lead. But you've got a budget spending that, or you don't have that exemption if you're trying to save it up for a big street project, like we've often done in the past. You'll have relatively low expenditures in one year and higher expenditures in the next year. If you spend that saved money, that can get you in trouble with the lead law in the year when you're saving that money up for the big project down the road. And so it's kind of ups and downs that it's good to have the additional restricted funds authority for.
Rainy day fund, then?
What was that?
Is it a rainy day kind of fund? Wouldn't need be when you have the highs and lows for any projects? Is that what I understand?
Yes.
Okay.
And Randy, this has become customary, from what I remember, at the time of each budget approval process, as a measure for flexibility within the budgeting process. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's right. It gives us additional flexibility we wouldn't have without it.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2022-50 is adopted.
Item 25, Would Look for a Motion to Consider Ordinance Number 5801, Approving the Fiscal Year 2022 to 23 Appropriations, Approving the Fiscal Year 22 to 23 Proprietary Budget, and Approving the Strategic Plan.
Senator Agnew?
Ordinance Number 5801 for consideration.
Second?
Motion in second. And just as some background, we did, as a body, have a public hearing on the budget plan last week. Randy, I'll turn it over to you to just talk about the process, this being the final step, the last, final step in the formal process of approving budget.
Yes. This is simply one of the action items that is necessary to implement the budget that we had the hearing on last week. And there are several other items you'll see coming down the agenda that are also necessary to implement that budget that we had the hearing on.
Okay. With that, any discussion, comments from council staff, public, prior to moving on to consideration? Okay. Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, adopting the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriation Bill, appropriating sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, adopting the proprietary budget statement, adopting the strategic plan, providing perseverance, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and take effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
With that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Number 57, 5801 passes on first reading.
And our budgets do at the state before the end of the month as an aside, so...
So no pressure?
Yeah.
Unless you want to meet next week.
Do I then hear a motion to approve on suspend the rules?
I'll make the motion to approve on second and third.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Number 5801 passes on second and third.
Item 26, Would Look for a Motion to Consider Resolution Number 2022-51, Approving the Property Tax Requests for Fiscal Year 22 to 23 in Amounts Different Than Fiscal Year 21, 22.
I'll offer for consideration resolution Number 2022-51. Second?
Motion in second. Randy, some background on this?
This is another requirement of statutes. Anytime your property tax changes, either up or down from the amount you levied in the prior year, you've got to have a hearing on that and receive comments on it, which we did last week. And you've got to pass a resolution that sets those property tax amounts an amount different than it was in the prior year. Our debt service fund property tax doesn't change. It's mentioned in that resolution that it doesn't change. Vehicle parking district fund property tax actually goes down because they're levying the 35 cents that's allowed by law. And their assessed valuation decreased to $122,375, resulting in a $428 decrease in the property tax levy. The general fund property tax is increasing $793,382. And with, even with that amount of increase, with a large increase in assessed value we had this year, a lot of which was related to the annexation, this results in a decrease in our levy rate of a little more than 3/10 of a cent. So that's an explanation of our changes in tax requests from last year to this year, which are included in the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Any questions on that, or comments, council? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2022-51 is adopted.
Item number 27, Would entertain a motion to consider ordinance Number 5802, Approving the Fiscal Year 22, 23 Classification and Pay Plan.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance Number 5802.
Second?
Motion in second. Randy, one more time, this is our last in a series of budget-related measures.
Yes. And this simply implements classifications and pay plan were included in the 22, 23 budget.
Okay. Any questions, comments, council? Hearing none, please vote.
Oh, short title.
Oh, short title, I'm sorry.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range, repealing ordinance Number 5746, providing for publication in pamphlet form, and when this ordinance shall take effect.
Okay. With that, please vote.
Shane? Sorry, thank you. All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Number 5802 carries on first reading.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings.
Motion, a motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings? No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Number 5802 carries on second and third.
Item 28, Would Look for a Motion to Consider Ordinance Number 5803, Amending Section 2.5-5 of the Official City Code to address false alarm fees when the owner of the alarm does not have a current permit as required by city code.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion in second. And to kick off discussion on this, we'll hear from Chief Don Miller of the Norfolk Police Division.
Hello, Mayor and Council. This is what I would consider a housekeeping item in anticipation of the fee schedule that's next on the agenda. Currently, when we have alarms, we give the person six false alarms at no charge. And once you get to a seven false alarm, then we start charging for that. We're having a situation, and the reason for the permits that we issue, we issue permits from the police station. They're free, but the idea behind that is we get a list of night call people. So when we respond to the alarms, we know what kind of alarm they have. We have some people to get a hold of if it's in the middle of the night, so we can resolve the issue and go on to our next task. We have an ongoing issue of certain entities who have alarms, but they refuse to turn in the permits. That creates a lot of extra work for us, trying to go through billings, utility billings, and trying to figure out who even owns some of these properties. I'm getting ahead with that fee schedule, but what this does is it just identifies in the fee structure a separate pay system or a separate fee system for those that have an alarm permit and those that don't have an alarm permit. I'll give you the same description later on for the fees when we get to that, but if you don't have an alarm or don't have night call information, they get charged the $25 for all false alarms, starting on the first one, compared to getting six free ones if we have night call information. This ordinance just refers everything to that fee schedule, so that as that fee schedule changes in the future, we don't have to readjust this ordinance going forward.
So those six free ones, is that an annual thing or a lifetime thing? How's that work?
It's the annual thing.
Annual thing, okay.
And we're charging 25. When I was looking at this, there was one alarm company that called in, and they were saying, they were anticipating having to pay up to $700, but it was for another jurisdiction. So our fees are substantially lower than what a lot of other jurisdictions are.
Don, is this just for commercial properties?
It's for any alarms, if they're commercial or residential, yes.
Okay.
But it does not include fire alarms. If you look at the ordinance, it separates out fire alarms. That's a little bit different. This is burglar alarms, break-ins, security systems. But it's residential and commercial. And we just want people to turn in their permits so that we have night call information, so we know how to help them. We don't charge anything for it. We just want night call information.
Can you explain the permitting process?
The what?
The permitting process, what it takes, you know, if some people, you know, are buying these systems and maybe they're not aware, you know?
Oftentimes, if they don't know about it, the first time we get an alarm, we send them a letter saying, here's the alarm process, here's the permit process. Basically, fill out the night call information, send it into us. We keep it on file. It goes into our computer system. If they don't send it in, then we send them a letter every single month trying to get the information back. But it's a very basic, simple process of tell us who to call when the alarm goes off. And who's your alarm company? Because that changes over time. And without that, then we'll get an alarm company that might call us that we have an alarm, but we don't know who to call. And we can't just walk away from those. We've got to have to have some sort of successful resolution because we don't know if there's somebody inside or medical emergency or whatever. And this ordinance doesn't change any of that, other than it separates out a, two different structures in the fee schedule, one with alarms, one without alarms. And then if you choose not to allow that on the fee schedule, that really doesn't change the ordinance. It just gives us, this ordinance change is to refer it to the fee schedule.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or discussions? Okay. If not, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 2.5-5 of the Official City Code to address false alarm fees when the owner of the alarm does not have a current permit as required by city code, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Number 5803 carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings. Second?
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings? If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Number 5803 carries on second and third.
Item 29, Would Look for a Motion to Consider Ordinance Number 5804, Amending Section 2-5 of the City Code to update ambulance fees, to update false alarm fees, to update building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permit fees, to update subdivision plat approval fees, to update garbage and trash fees, to update water, sewer, stormwater, and wastewater rates, and fees to update zoning district map and conditional use permit fees, and to restructure recreation fees. This ordinance would have an operative date of October 1st, 2022.
Senator Agnew, I'll order you Number 5804 for consideration. Second?
Motion in second. And for some discussion on this, I think we hear from Andy Cole, our city administrator.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, normally, this would be an ordinance that we would have as part of our budget hearings as well to approve. But just giving some additional thought and some discussion staff's having, particularly with regard to some of the recreational fee changes in here, what we're going to ask the council to do tonight is table this ordinance, and then we will bring this back at the next meeting on October 3rd, and we will change that effective date to October 4th, primarily due to some of the recreation fees. We're going to, we're going to not move forward to some of those right now. We're going to, we're going to talk about some of those fees as we're going into our agreements and things that we're working with our sports groups in town. So we're going to have some of those discussions and then revisit some of those fees later on. So we're asking for you to table this ordinance until the 3rd.
Okay. Thank you, Andy.
I have a motion to reorganize number 5804 until next meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion second to table, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5804 is tabled.
Item 30, look for motion to consider approval of amendment number four to the agreement for engineering services between the city of Norfolk and Black and Beach Corporation for Water System Planning Services, for an amount not to exceed $56,614.
Make the motion.
Motion second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramus.
Mayor, I'm going to invite our, am I inviting the water director or the pass water director up, gentlemen? Okay, I'm going to invite the pass water sewer director up to walk us through that.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. So basically what this is, is we started a master plan November 4th of 2019. And in that master plan, what we do is Black and Beach would look at the total water distribution system, looking at pipe sizes, what needs to be upgraded, and we look at ages, water quality, different things like that. Due to some annexation and extending the two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, there's nine areas that we're looking at around the state. There's some east, that's basically all directions from Norfolk. So what we're doing is, since there's been some talk from developers and some of that, we're looking at these nine areas that we want to be included in the water master plan. And what that'll do is they will look at the loads that are going to be on these projected areas of development, and then they'll come back with what we need for pipe sizes. It's very important, because those loading will, you know, we got the west plant that we run in the, you know, year round. We've got to make sure those, the water mains are sized properly to basically serve all these areas. And so what this does is it's basically helps out that water master plan to look at these new areas that we're looking at for development. In a nutshell, that's kind of what it is. Can I answer your questions if you guys have some?
Dennis, can you explain loading a little bit, what that means, that the water is going out the plant to the surfaces?
That's a good question. So what it is, we'll have some areas, it'll be maybe a single family, you might have some, we got some industrial areas here. So they look at the different areas and the acres that could be served. And so it's basically how many gallons that you would use would go to that area. So that's what translates back to the sizes and water ages. So that's a good question, that.
Thank you.
That answers your question there.
Any other questions? Dennis, I'm not sure we got your name in the record. Dennis Watts, City of Norfolk. Any other discussion? Thank you, Dennis. If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 31, look for a motion to consider approval to move forward with the purchase of two Swenson Salters from Midwest Service and Sales Company for the amount of $53,468.58 for use by the Streets Division.
Make a motion.
Motion in second, and we're hearing from Steve or Will. Will? Well, oh, well, our city Streets Division manager.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. This here is for two Salters, similar to the ones we purchased a year ago, the one they purchased a year ago. This will be replacing two of the older units. We were out the one time last year, and they, two of them had to be rebuilt right away. So just trying to be proactive to get ahead of it. Looking at 65 to 70 days for these to deliver possibly, there's the hope. So just trying to plan ahead. Any questions?
Any questions?
These going on our newer rigs we just bought with Tannamax, are they going on our smaller trucks?
No, these, so the Tannamax we bought, those are, those got Salters on the back, along with likely two trucks we just ordered. These here are slide-ins for, it'll be a little different process. Historically, they've always put the Salters in the old trucks, which weren't capable of doing two functions. It looks like the new trucks can do two functions, so these will go in the, we'll be moving all the Salters into the newer trucks, trying to salt as we plow versus going back later. Just to try to improve the level of service.
You said expected delivery 65 to 70 days? Okay.
But they're safe.
All right. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Will. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, not quite done. We do, as we typically have every quarter, have a public comment period on the agenda, which is a time at which anyone wishing to make comment about almost anything can do so. We do have a five-minute limit, which is accounted for here by the city clerk and one opportunity per citizen. So do we have anyone wishing to make public comment?
Good evening, council, mayor and council. My name is Tim Ernst. I'm a citizen of Norfolk. And I'm here tonight to ask the council to consider allowing golf carts in the city residential streets. I'm not asking for arterial streets, like 25th Street and Norfolk Avenue, Benjamin, et cetera, you know, those type of streets, strictly residential areas. By doing so, you'd increase access to the golf courses, you know, go visit grandma and grandpa, be a lot easier, and this type of thing. Be a little less fuel, save a little fuel, maybe even see a house for sale you might want to purchase, or some landscaping ideas, you never know. I'm not asking for permission to drive into parks, even though that they probably do less damage to the park than walking in chairs. To best of my knowledge, we've had no problem with UTVs. And I know the private citizen sees a lot more than the police do. And it's not that they don't do a fantastic job, but, you know, you could spot that car a long ways away. And your golf carts are, you know, limited 20 mile an hour, so you don't have speed issues. The demographics of who owns them is a lot older, and you should have, you know, a lot less issues that way. I don't expect to be on the streets a half hour after sunset. And needless to say, it won't be a half hour before sunrise, but they, about all the new ones now come with lights, directionals, brake signals, all this good stuff. As far as liability, they all can be insured, and most of them are at this time. As for safety, a lot safer, you know, a lot safer than a motorcycle or whatever. You don't have the issues there. I see them driving all over in my neighborhood. And, you know, I've never seen them impeding traffic. I've never seen them, you know, doing anything that's really where they've been on the main road or anything like that. And I just like to see that happen. I think there's not that many of them out there, really. You know, like the UTVs, he's probably afraid that he's going to get lamb blasted with them all over the town like ants. And I don't know, you look at the license plate numbers, and I think they only go up to maybe 200, if that many. So that's all we have.
Thank you, Ms. Ernst. I appreciate you bringing that issue forward. A couple council members, I think, will attest to my saying in the last few weeks, I think we should revisit this issue. We've discussed in the past and didn't get quite there, but I do think it is prudent for us to take another look. I also understand the city of Columbus, I think, just recently passed an ordinance, or is close to passing an ordinance on this. So it's not uncommon at this point.
My name's Luke Cruz. Do you mind, I saw a packet.
Sure, yes.
So I believe it was with the Columbus deal, it got brought to my attention. Because still, for my living, I live, I'm based out of Norfolk, but I have probably a four-hour radius where I deliver to, so I see it in a lot of communities. I'll go back to this packet, and I'll just kind of hit on a few quick points while you're passing them around. So what I see is, it is actually a big deal, especially with younger families. Probably the ones that stick, I wrote down a few that stuck out to me, like Hickman, South Lincoln, Elkhorn, Bennington, Gretna. I deliver quite a few to those in the community. It's, they, I would say it's like younger families, and they use them just more, I don't see them just driving all over, just more for their, like, community. They use them on the weekends and evenings, and I guess when I take them there, you can't believe how much they enjoy them. Just seems like it gives a sense of community. They're pretty safe, they're easy to use. We have a lot of people that are going to them from other transportation vehicles. And kind of when I, we first got into this business, we were just thinking, my brother and I like to golf, but it's actually, there's a lot more demand just for the transportation than the golf. They go 20, 25 miles an hour, depending on the manufacturer. We see a lot of people, the elderly, use them. Kids will buy them for their parents, or they'll buy it just to kind of get around and go through their neighborhoods. They're actually, everybody calls them golf carts, but a lot of them they're going to, it's called a PTV. It's a personal transport vehicle, and they're specifically made to drive around. They come in two, four, and six seaters. The newer ones, they all have headlights, brake lights, taillights, turn signals, hazards for safety. What I see is usually places pick a mile per hour, like 25 to 35 and lower, have an age criteria with a valid license, and they get rules or ordinances to keep them safe. They do require insurance where they're legalized, so if there ever is an accident, people are covered. They charge a yearly fee. Seat belts, I'll just say real quick, a lot of the bigger manufacturers, they actually think it's safer to not have seat belts on them. But through this packet, I just found, I'll just hit on a few quick ones. The first one is Texas, and it's real simple. It just shows their requirements, turn signals, reflectors, headlights, under 35, they cost $10 a year to plate. The second one is pretty relevant, that's Hickman, Nebraska, so super easy. They just want to have liability insurance for a certain dollar amount. They don't want them after dark, you have to have a class-to operator. The third page kind of is their actual ordinance. I'm just going to kind of go through this pretty quick, since I don't have a lot of time. The next one is actually Columbus, Nebraska, kind of what they're doing. It's just an article that talks about a citizen, why he likes it, the police chief there on the bottom of the second page of the Columbus one. He talks about why he likes them and what requirements, so they want them to have headlights, brake lights, taillights, turn signals, horns. He says seat belts and a flag in the back. I see a lot of them, they have the flags in the back. Doesn't want them on the highways. Next one, Queen Creek, Arizona, that's just south of Phoenix. Kind of, again, they want to have them licensed, they have speed limitations. The next page, again, the requirements, brakes, headlights, next one's Arizona, and then Florida. So I just, I actually do this for a living, so I do see if you're trying to attract people or differentiate each other. It actually is a big deal. Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you, Luke. I appreciate all this information. I know you and I have talked about this before. From your research here, it looks like Hickman's ordinance tackles both UTVs and golf carts are included there. Have you seen, is that typical for other city ordinance, if you've looked at, they're addressed in the same ordinance that you, the golf carts?
I believe so. That was the only one I've printed. I do know, I don't know like what Gretna, Elkhorn, what their actual ordinances are, but we do deliver a lot. And like I said, it's more, I honestly, this is my opinion, I don't probably see somebody driving through town with one. It's more just their little area they drive to their neighbors.
Most I see are restricted to residential streets, right?
Mayor or Luke, I think we had discussions when we were talking about UTVs originally, and golf carts came up also. And I believe the state had different regulations for the two, which is why we separated them. Am I thinking correctly? So it has been brought up. I appreciate you bringing it up again, because I think it does need to be hit on of possibly doing this. But that's, I believe, why we had two separate.
Yeah, they're completely different statutes, and when it comes to golf carts, as of 2020, that's when we actually had the last conversation about this. But as of 2020, if you're looking at a golf cart, it has to be on a road that has a speed limit of 35 miles per hour or less, and that golf cart cannot exceed 20 miles per hour. So I know, I don't know if, Don, if you've reviewed that lately, or if you wanted to speak more to the law and the differences between what we have in place already that's legal and the proposal for the golf cart ordinance, but that was my recollection from two years ago.
I don't know how much conversation you want to get into today, but with the golf carts, there've been some recent statute changes on some of this with golf carts. Golf carts have to be designed to go under 20 miles an hour, no more than four seats, operate on roads that are less than 35 miles an hour. And the statutory guidelines are, some of them, some people mentioned, you can't have them at night, you have to, you know, there's, but there's specific criteria to use, driver's license, insurance, that type of thing. One other thing that I'm surprised you didn't bring up is the low-speed vehicles, LSVs.
That's the 20 to 25.
Right, and so that's, well, I'm not, we could have a big discussion about this, but there's some guidelines that allow for low-speed vehicles separate than the golf carts. So there's a different set of statutes that apply to each one differently. And I recently had a conversation with Chief Sheer in Columbus, I believe tonight is when they were voting on their ordinance, and they tidied exactly with their UTV ordinances. And then added a few extra restrictions, like the other gentleman mentioned with the main agricultural streets. So conversation to have, but there's UTV statutes, ATV statutes, golf cart statutes, and now LSV, low-speed vehicles statutes. So certain criteria are different. For example, the six-seater golf carts are not allowed to be operated on the street. They don't fit the definition, the statutory definition of golf cart. So those are all things we can go through, and, you know, other states are great for reference, but we have to, of course, follow the rest of the laws.
And it sounds like, chief, some of those statutes have changed just recently, maybe?
The LSV one did, the low-speed vehicle, there was, I saw that there was something in 2022. I don't know exactly what that change was for low-speed vehicles. Golf cart stuff did not change, that's been on the books for probably 2015, I think was the last change on that. But the low-speed vehicles had a recent change that I haven't researched.
Chief, if a person was traveling from the east to the west on Canigstein and crossed 13th Street, would that be legal?
All of the statutes allow you to cross roadways. If you do it, you know, at an intersection, come to a complete stop, you know, those types of things. So they give you opportunities to cross roadways, you just can't operate on those pieces of roadways.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty sure that Columbus, Nebraska, when it talks about highway, you can just cross it.
Well, and that's a state, that's a state law, that you can operate on state highways. And then Columbus added some of their main thoroughfares, I don't remember the names of all their streets, but any of them, by law, you can cross, but you can't operate on those state highways.
Thought that was probably the case, but I just wanted to make sure.
So referencing what Rob just said, how do, if you were going to cross 13th Street, our town's kind of separated by the flood control. How do you go from east to west if you're staying in residential areas? Because there's only three bridges, and they're on Main Pharaoh there.
Our flood control causes traffic problems for a few things. So, I mean, you've got Benjamin, you've got First Street, and you've got Omaha. And Omaha's a state highway, so that's off. So it would have to be Norfolk Avenue or Benjamin.
So the crossing would be allowed on Benjamin and Norfolk Avenue, possibly?
To your example is, you can cross at a 90-degree angle, you can't drive on there.
Yeah.
So that prevents you, that flood control prevents you from making that transition, and if that's what we're, if that's what you're looking at doing.
Very good.
You're, I mean, you're right, the flood control creates some issues.
That was my question.
From what I've heard, though, I think they're just asking you to be on 25 mile an hour residential streets or 25 mile an hour in laps. From what I've heard, though, I think that they're just asking you to be on twenty-five mile an hour, and resident streets are twenty-five mile an hour and less.
So I don't see people that don't cross towns, I don't see a lot of areas that cross.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Do I have to push a button? No, it's magic. Oh, thank you, Mayor and Councilman. First, I just wanted to thank all of you.
Sandy, can you give us your name, please?
Oh, sorry, I wrote it down. Sandy Wolf. I'm just a citizen here. I wanna thank you all for saying yes, for sitting in these seats, for being elected. I know sometimes you make hard decisions and you're criticized, but that's what we're all doing. But I'm actually here to talk about golf carts, and I don't even own one, but I'm just a joyful writer. I love all the progressive things you do in Norfolk, and we go on vacation to very similar cities like Carolina Coast and Palm Springs and places. We rent golf carts, and it's great, it's a great way to get around. Could be another industry here that maybe Luke could do and rent them out and encourage our downtown visitors, even though it's not residential, but just to get around. I think golf carts are a wonderful way to encourage people to meet each other and get around our city. So I'm just here to support the golf carts, golf cars, and hope that you can get them on the agenda at some point.
Very good. Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Jim McKenzie. I know some of you have been caught off guards by my outspokenness on city issues and projects and city budgeting. Over the past six years, I've noticed a marked change in how the city operates. Instead of being open to the public and open to differing ideas and opinions, it's become secretive and defensive. Much of the discussion on agenda items is now held in non-public, private subcommittee meetings. There's very little discussion and questioning during the actual council meeting, simply a vote up or down. On the rare occasion that a council person has a suggestion that deviates from the predetermined course of action, that council person is shut down and told their idea is not possible. Most of the times, the reasons given are contrived and incorrect. That creates a, not, an unhealthy environment in the city. There's no place for that in this community, and it needs to change for an inclusive city. The average citizen of Norfolk has become apathetic and angry. They feel they no longer have a voice in city government. When they contact city administration or some elected officials, they feel their concerns or opinions are not listened to and have no value. Over the past six months, the city began having work session meetings. They're public meetings, so the whole council can be informed on certain items, and I support that. However, the meetings were initially held in the training room instead of the council chambers. They were held at four PM, so it was more difficult for the working public to attend. They were not broadcast on TV, they were not broadcast on the internet, and they were not recorded for later viewing. When I complained to the mayor about this, nothing changed. It was after I complained to every single council person that one council person brought it up at a meeting and requested that these start to be broadcast and recorded. They eventually moved to the council chambers. Many times, the agendas for those work session meetings only had a very short, one-line description. There were no attachments to the agenda, so the public had very little advanced knowledge about what is being discussed. In summary, the citizens have elected all of you to represent them. They feel they shouldn't have to come to every meeting because they elected you to represent their interests. First and foremost, they expect you to be a watch guard over their tax dollars. I believe many elected officials have lost sight of that primary responsibility. When I listened to the audio recording of the city administrator, mayor, and some elected officials discussing how much money they could generate off taxpayers through the half percent sales tax increase, it sounded like a feeding frenzy. Instead of what are our needs and what will they cost, it was how much money can we get, and let's find ways to spend it all. Therefore, I have three suggestions. Number one, encourage different points of view and be open and honest in that discussion. No more making up facts or giving reasons that are completely false and assuming the public won't notice or understand. Make it your primary responsibility to be a watch guard for the citizens' tax dollars, primary responsibility. Remember, they are why you're here, not just the special interests, and they're weary of the constant tax increases. Eliminate the private subcommittee meetings and work session meetings. Hold all these discussions in public at regular city council meetings. This may mean you need to have weekly council meetings, but the total time would not be much different than having subcommittee meetings and council meetings separately. And it would result in a more informed and involved public. I can hear some of you already, there's no way we can have some of these discussions we have in the subcommittee in front of the public. My answer to that is, if you can't discuss it in front of the public, you shouldn't be discussing it at all, and I challenge you to try it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. You know, I appreciate your participation. Like I said, Jim, you're a longtime city employee. You saw a lot within City Hall, obviously you're following this all very closely now. But I think a lot of what you just projected there is opinion and not fact. I would simply say, for the public who watched this meeting tonight, for example, I think there was a free and fair voicing of thoughts by the council and the public, and we sought to shut no one off or restrict their ability to voice their opinions. And that is how I think we wish to operate all our public proceedings. You mentioned the work sessions. Those are work sessions that are attended by all council members, that are publicly noticed, and they're open meetings. Unlike subcommittee meetings, which are not open to the public. And we've shifted a lot of our focus to going to work sessions for the very stated purpose of making those discussions public and involving all of the council members. So I would also take issue that the average citizen is apathetic and angry. It's not what I hear about Norfolk when I'm out talking to people. So again, you're free to come here and voice your opinion, and we encourage that, we encourage that of everyone. But I don't think it necessarily means that it reflects what your opinions reflect, what is happening in the city. And I also don't appreciate the narrative that this is some kind of spending spree that the city is on. In fact, if someone really looked closely at this budget that we just passed tonight, you would see it's one, it reflects one of the strongest fiscal conditions that the city's ever been in. And it reflects growth, it reflects city services matching up with growth. It reflects a very healthy emergency reserve and beginning cash fund balance. And it also addresses infrastructure needs, promotes public safety, and enhances quality of life. So while, I might add, maintaining the third lowest property tax levy in the state of Nebraska, and we've taken off taxes, tax measures, in the last few years, which is a fact that can't be disputed. Occupation taxes that funded Memorial Field came off ten years earlier than expected, are no longer on the city rolls. The last sales tax initiative we did was passed, approved by voters, to fund and to fund the renovation and expansion of the library. That was collected for thirty-six months and then came off the rolls. So I don't think also it's accurate to say that we're in some kind of high-tax environment. The budget you can, that everybody can see and go to online would tell that story. So we still are in a public comment session. Anyone else wishing to make comment can do so. All right, seeing and hearing no one, we are adjourned. Thank you.